Good evening and welcome to the Smyrna Town Council meeting for December. Tonight, under public comments, as you all will remember, the town's public comment period shall be reserved for those citizens that have signed up to address the town council or a board or committee at least 24 hours in advance of the meeting pursuant to the town's public comment policy as outlined above in our agenda. Tonight, we have one individual who has signed up to speak, Christina Siraj. Christina, are you here? Okay, then we will move on and I will call our meeting to order. And tonight, our prayer is going to be done by one of our favorite Smyrna Police Department chaplains, Tim York, and our pledge will be done by Town Manager Dave Santucci. So if you'll all stand with us, please.
Let's pray together. Heavenly Father, we're grateful for the opportunity we have together in our city. We're grateful for our leaders. We're grateful for those who are serving. Thank you for those public servants who serve this city every day. Father, we pray for protection. We pray for wisdom. May we encourage each other this time of year. May we remember, Father, the reason that we celebrate this season, and may we celebrate You. We pray all this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Tim. Thanks, Dave. Amber, if you'll do roll call, please.
Yes, ma'am. Councilman Dempsey.
Here.
Councilwoman Peoples.
Here.
Councilman Cole.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Short.
Here.
Councilman Sullivan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
Mayor Reed.
Here. For those of you that are just now joining us and weren't able to join us on TV at 4:00, the council looks a little bit different tonight. And Jerome, we are glad to have you.
Thank you.
So at this time, we'll move on to item four, which is our approval of corrections of the minutes of the November 12th, 2024 regular meeting and the November 25th, 2024 workshop meeting of the town council. Jeff, are these in order?
In order as before, ma'am.
Okay, council, are there any additions or corrections that need to be made?
Move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. We'll now move on to item five and six, Correspondents' and Communications and Awards and Recognitions. Amber or Dave, anything tonight?
No.
No? Okay. Then we'll move on to item seven, which is our consent agenda. And these are items that are determined by our town manager to be routine matters and not necessarily needing individual discussion. I do always like to read these out individually so that those here in the audience and those at home know exactly what we're voting on. So our first item is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Power DMS, a software product for the police department's document and policy management. Item B is approval of the terms of a policy revision to the Smyrna Police Department's pre-employment qualifications. Item C is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Waypoint Business Solutions LLC for the procurement, installation, and configuration of two new data storage systems. Item D is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute change order number one with S&amp;W Contracting Company for the Genie Lane Extension Street Lighting. Item E is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with Cigna Healthcare for the town's employee health, vision, and dental plans, and stop-loss coverage for the calendar year 2025. Item F is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute change order number four for the 1-hour lift station project. And item G is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with the Oregon Museum of Science and Industry for the Happy Brain exhibit. Council, is there any item you'd like to pull off and discuss individually or have questions on?
Mayor, I've got a couple of questions, but I'm not sure if we need to pull them off.
Which ones do you have questions on?
It'd be A and D.
Okay, then we'll pull off A and D. And items B, C, E, F, and G, do I have a motion to approve?
Somebody.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Who is my motion, Harold?
Jerry, you want the motion?
Sure.
Jerry's got the motion. Gee, good with second?
Sure.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now go back to look at item A, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Power DMS, a software product for the police department's document and policy management. Jerome?
This basically, and question to Town Attorney Jeff Peach. As I was reading through the contract, I noticed it's an extensive terms and condition contract. And just wondering if we were fine with section 14, the indemnification. You know, I know a lot of times we use our own standard terms and conditions. I think we kind of discussed it a little bit, maybe even just.
Yeah, now I need to pull this one specifically up. They should have a standard addendum that would negate that as well, but I'll have to pull it up and go to it. If I can find it.
Yeah, it's pretty lengthy.
What section did you say?
I think me and Dave discussed it as well, and I think a lot of times, these software vendors have a pretty standard terms and conditions.
Sure.
And I was just, I know from dealing with contracts and indemnification, was always a main point of discussion. Just wanted to make sure, you know, you've got a comfort level with it.
Sure, and the good thing is, in Tennessee, as you may or may not know, you probably do because you do some in contract, it would be illegal anyway, so it would not be enforceable for municipal government to indemnify a third party. And so, well, you don't want it to be in there at certain times, just so that everybody's on notice. It would be an unenforceable provision regardless.
Okay, that's a question I have on that, Mayor.
Okay, so any other comments or questions? Then do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to item D, which is approval of the terms of an authorization for the mayor to execute change order number one with S&amp;W Contracting Company for the Genie Lane Extension Street Lighting. Jerome?
Yes, the question is there, at the end of the contract, there's an exclusion paragraph, an exclusion paragraph that says, if we damage a sidewalk, if we damage that, all this ancillary work is not included in that change order. So I was just wondering if that should be in the inclusive part of the contract or...
That's something our street department can take care of, and we can use our own calls.
So we're not setting ourselves up for a change order with it?
No, we're not. That's why we're doing that. That way, we can do that, and we can do it much cheaper than it would been if the contractor had to include that in his price.
Got you. Yep.
Other comments or questions? Okay, then do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion at a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to old business. We have one public hearing tonight. It's a consideration of an ordinance amending the text to the Smyrna Municipal Zoning Ordinance, Article Four, Section 4.070, Plan Development Regulations. Hey, Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council. This is a, these are several amendments to Article Four, Section 4.070, specifically 4.076, adding an additional number 4.077, and then also 4.073. These are basically new and revised requirements for planned residential developments in Smyrna. And so, Mr. Santucci had asked me to put together a presentation. This is something that we have already, a lot of this, we've already talked about with our council and planning commission through, as we've worked through this. But we wanted to bring it up for the public, so the public can see it and understand kind of what we're talking about, in a little more detail than I can give, just in a brief agenda summary. So PRDs are planned residential developments. PUDs are something that's kind of grew out of, kind of post-World War II, as a kind of a concept, a different way to regulate development beyond just straight zoning. It started out really as a, something that was kind of geared specifically to single-family residential, and kind of cluster developments for homes on smaller lots with common open space. Over the years, it's evolved to basically include any and all uses. As small as a few acres or up to thousands of acres, we've not had any in Smyrna that large, but around the country, there have been some that are certainly that big. The overall design is, buildings and everything is looked at much more closely, and reviewed and regulated more closely now, at a much higher level than was typically done in the Plan developments are regulated differently within different jurisdictions. Some cases, it's an overlay added to a base zoning district. In some cases, they're actually conditional uses reviewed by the Board of Zoning Appeals. And in some cases, which is the case in Smyrna, the legislative body approves the initial kind of concept plan and the big picture regulating plan, and then the Planning Commission approves the subsequent plans. This is something, what's how Smyrna has handled it since 2001. Prior to that, PUDs were actually, were reviewed by the VZA and the Planning Commission, and the council was not involved at all. They're treated in Smyrna as saying, basically the same manner as we would any other rezoning request, reviewed by Planning Commission, make recommendations to councils, and makes that final determination on approval or denial. They can be residential, commercial, industrial, or any mix of two or more of those types. And if they are approved, the Planning Commission, as we said earlier, does review Platts, subdivision Platts site plans, just as they would in any other residential or commercial or industrial Kind of pros and cons, and you know, the pros, the town is able to approve a very specific development plan for a piece of property, so the overall density, lot sizes, uses, architectural requirements, open space, all those things are looked at and approved very specific to a specific site. Basically, it comes like its own internal or unique zoning district for a piece of property. Recreational amenities are required if there's any residential element to the development. And then if it's approved, the plan and everything that's part of that plan becomes that regulatory document moving forward. You know, some cons, obviously, smaller lot sizes often forces front entry garages only. There's not enough room per side of rear entry garages in those cases many times, smaller setbacks. And it appears that maybe there's a higher density development. If it's not necessarily higher density, it appears like it is, because it's on, you're only developing a smaller portion of the property instead of spreading it out over the entire piece of property. Amendments, those are things that are reviewed by staff. Within certain parameters, the staff does have authority to approve amendments, limited, basically, they have to decrease overall density, increase common open space, or if there's some issue that's popped up from engineering or other kind of unforeseen circumstances, and they need to kind of move a building, change the location or orientation of a building, that can be, is limited to no more than 10% of the approved development. Within those parameters, staff does have the ability to approve amendments. Outside of that, if they don't meet those parameters, those are required to come back to Planning Commission and Council and reviewed in the same way that the PUD was originally So there's several recommended amendments. I thought we had one more slide in there. Just as a transition here, those were, that's kind of the overview of what PUDs are, specific to what we're talking about. The council asked staff to review our requirements. We had a joint meeting, several, about five different joint meetings between council and planning commission, kind of from June to about, or July to September. Staff looked at Franklin, Nolansville, Mount Juliet, Lebanon, and Murfreesboro, and kind of looked at some, get some best practices from those communities that are around us. Came up with several different options for discussion, and there was a lot of discussion about many different things. And the amendments that are, have passed first reading and up for you tonight, or second reading, are kind of distillation of all those, all that discussion and all the various options that we looked at. Five different main, big areas that the amendments govern, lot size, building materials, foundations themselves, building foundations, the setbacks and orientation of buildings, and then also garages. These would, these new requirements wouldn't be applicable to any PRD that has over 25 single-family lots in them, which is most of them. Every now and then, we get one that's smaller, but most of them are larger than that. So lot size, they're required to have at least three different minimum lot sizes, so it's not all one lot size, minimum lot size. So this provides some variation in the lot sizes themselves. Minimum of 2,000 square feet difference between those minimums. The smallest lot size cannot exceed 40% of the entire development, and the maximum 30% can be at that mid-tier lot size, so you'd have at least 30% at the largest lot size. The minimum lot size is 7,000 square feet. If townhomes are proposed, it can't exceed over half, or up, no more than half of the smallest lot size grouping. And then if, abutting other surrounding properties, the minimum lot size is 11,000 square feet if it abuts new lots, but anything R1 or county zoning up R M, any other adjacent residential zoning, the new developments, have to have at least 75% of that existing, whatever that minimum lot size in that zoning district. So you'd have a little bit of a transition between those surround, those abutting lots would have a little bit more of a size transition, not a harsh transition. Building materials, and these are also kind of affects the elevations, we require at least, would require at least 12 unique building elevations, so meaning different housing, the houses will look different as far as how they're set up. Have to incorporate architectural, various architectural details, minimum of two materials, being brick, stone, or fiber cement siding, any of those, two of those three minimum, unless they go with entirely brick, which would be, would not have to, if they want to go entirely brick, one material would be okay, and that's on any street-facing facade. On the side, if a house is a corner lot, and has two front yards, so to speak, that side that's not, or the side that wouldn't be facing the main front door, they have to incorporate some sort of architectural details found on the front, such as shutters or windows, and wraparound porches, bay windows, things like that, so it's not all, not just a flat wall with some windows. If it's the side or any, or the rear that doesn't face any street, you could have one primary material, and that it would, we do have to, per state law, have to allow any material to be utilized, but we do limit that to no more than 10% of the facade. Street view, this is kind of a diagram that kind of, kind of identifies what we're trying to go for here, that there's at least two lots in between, so you, on the same side of the road as far as identical elevations, so you're breaking up, so it's not every house that's the same. And then across from, adjacent to, or diagonal to, you can't have, you can't be repeating anything. So even across the street, or diagonal across the street, you would have some variation there as well. Such, you know, varying the roof orientation, ridge line, deep heights, those type of things, garage details, building facade colors and design elements should vary between each This is just a couple of examples. This is primarily, one of these developments isn't Smyrna, one's in Lebanon, but kind of looking at, just again, the variations between the homes, as well as on the sides of the homes, where you're seeing, again, that wraparound porch, or the shutters on the windows and things, again, just to kind of break up the walls, since it does face a street there, that you kind of have some variation there in the, in the, in the look of the homes. Foundations, this one's pretty simple. Basically, you can't have any more, just exposed concrete block foundations, you have to finish them with brick or stone. That one's pretty straightforward. Setbacks, orientation, this is, as far as the building setbacks within the lots, the maximum of 40% of the lots can have seven and a half foot side setback. Lots that don't have that have to have at least 10 foot if they're a front-loaded garage. Architectural features such as wraparound porches, et cetera, can extend into that front setback, it's the side of the house, and just as a way to have some variation. We did put something in, I don't know how much this will be used, but just to give an option for builders and developers to, if you have side-loaded garage dwellings, that maybe you could shift within that setback a little bit to give you more room on one side or the other to have a side-loaded garage. You may have, still have a minimum of 15 foot between the houses, but you might have, might be a little closer on one side and more room on the other. For garage, if a garage does, again, faces a street, the minimum setback is 38 feet if it's a private street, or 35 feet for a public street. That's just to provide enough room within there. The house itself might could be closer to than 35 feet, but the garage has to be at least that distance, just to provide room for off-street parking, not having cars parking on the street, or in the driveway but blocking the sidewalk. For multiple road frontages, this is for the orientation of the homes, the dwelling is, will be required to face the more prominent roadway as designated by the Major Thoroughfare Plan. If there are the, both streets are, have the same classification, we'll have to look at those when the development comes in and kind of designate what those streets are, and what those corner lots would have to face. This is just some examples, kind of where they, again, the homes were shifted, maybe closer on one side than the other, just to provide some room to, again, to achieve some of those side entry garages. Garages, we talked quite a bit about garages, and we'll probably talk more about that than almost anything else in place. And just to kind of break in, just for the look of the homes, because so many of them, again, do face the street. Corner lots are required to have side entry garages. So again, you would face that more prominent street, and the garage would be on the side. The garage can't, cannot exceed 40% of the width of the front wall on the first floor. It's a little tougher on a single-story dwelling, but if it's, so it would not be required in a single-story, one two-story dwelling would be required. Windows are required to be within that door, the garage door, for any street-facing garage. And in addition, they have to pick two other variations, and there's a list there of several things they can choose from. Again, recessing the door from the front facade, the lighting, the garage roofline above it, or the gabled roofline, rather, decorative trim, having a double garage door instead of a single two-story, or two-car garage door, various other things there with windows and decorative doors, just to kind of break up kind of what those, how the look is. So these are just examples of various pictures of what those would mean. Again, the windows above the door, the windows in the doors, the double doors and various things. Those are all single-story homes, just to kind of give you an example of what, what those have, the look there on a single story. And then we have basically the same idea just for two-story homes, just to again, give examples of what we're talking about. So again, this is, this is just to summarize of everything that we just kind of went over, and again, just to, again, this would be for any PRD, any PUD or PRD, anything with 25 or more, single-family lots. So I believe that's what I have, Mayor.
Great, thanks, Kevin. Council, we have been going over this process probably for the last eight months, Kevin?
Well, we started meeting back in June or July, so.
Okay.
Yeah, probably six.
Six.
Yeah.
And we've had quite a bit of discussion. We have had discussion with Planning Commission, with staff, with other communities, with developers to give input as well. And are there any questions or comments for Kevin before I go to the public?
Only a couple of things I want to say. I mean, obviously, presentation is great, but there's a lot of words in there that probably don't make a lot of sense to a lot of folks, so. A few things that I wanted to kind of highlight, you know, one of the things that this does, and one of the goals that we were doing was reduce density. We've heard from the public that they want reduced density, they want larger lots, they want these PRDs to not quite be so, quite so thick, and that's what this does. There's a couple of ways that we've done that in this. Larger lot sizes are now required, varying lot sizes, so you can't have just all the same lot size in one development. And then also, larger setbacks. Seven and a half was the, was pretty much everything we were seeing, because that was the minimum. Now we're requiring those 10-foot, which adds an additional five feet between every, between the houses. So that's one way we're increasing density, is, or decreasing density, is larger lots and more setback. You obviously can't get many houses on the property. The side entry garages, I think, is a big thing. One of the things that we saw, as well as the side facades, one of the things we saw at Wind Farms, that the public was very vocal about, was the houses that face Rock Springs Road, and it seemed the back of those houses, as you drove down the road, one of the things that we changed with this is that houses have to face the prominent street. So if that development had come forward now, those houses would have to be turned around and face Rock Springs Road. So that's, that's another one of the pieces that was kind of discussed. And then the altering lot sizes, I think it's important for folks to kind of understand, we see this 7,000 square foot, 9,000 square foot, 11,000 square foot, that doesn't mean a lot to most folks, don't really understand how that correlates. To give it a little more perspective, one acre is about 45,000 square feet, so a third of an acre is 15,000 square feet, and that's essentially R1. R1 or higher is 15,000 square feet or higher. So this is 11,000 is the lot size that we're requiring, the largest, and we're requiring 30% of those. That's 1,000 more than R3, and a few thousand less than R1. So it's kind of in between R3 and R1, 30% of those lots are going to be in that range. The 9,000 is only 1,000 less than R3, and then the 7,000 is kind of the traditional PRD lots we would see. So those are kind of just some of the main key elements that we, that we've changed, and it's directly a response to what we've heard from the public. This wasn't something that we took on without considering what we were hearing.
Other comments or questions before we move to the public hearing?
Yeah, I've got a few comments. First of all, appreciate all the work y'all have done on it. I know y'all have worked on it several months and kind of listened to everybody. Just bear with me here. Just a general comment, at one time, and Mark, you're probably aware of this, we used to bring everything in as R1 when we annexed it.
That's the default zone.
Yeah, yeah. And I was kind of curious how, seems like everything we're bringing in now is the PRD higher density when it's annexed. And I was just trying to figure out how we got from bringing it in as the default R1 to where we are now with the PRD.
And I don't mind talking with that a little bit. Kevin, you can probably explain that. Everything in Smyrna that has not been developed, if you will, initially starts out as an R1. So it's not like necessarily we're bringing everything in as R1. That's where we're growing from, that's the default zone of anything that's not been annexed at any time. So I don't think we bring them in as R1, they're already here as R1, and then we may.
Well, when we annex them, we've got to, we've got to bring them in as some zone. Well, when we annex them, we've got to, we've got to bring them in as some zone.
But did, Kevin, did the state not require us to bring them in at R1 originally and then we had to change it from there?
Yeah, the state didn't require that. That's the, when Smyrna and other municipalities could annex on our own initiative, which we can no longer do, R1 was that default zone. We annexed, like I can, off the top of my head, we annexed the area, because we were having several requests and we just went and annexed everybody. We went all the way to I-24, Rocky Fork Road. We annexed everything all at one time. That's probably been fifteen or eighteen years ago now. And everything was zoned R1 because that was the default zone. And so, if someone requests annexation, which is what everybody has to do now, because we can't annex them on our own initiative, if they don't request a zone, it would be automatically R1. You know, we've.
But the trend seems to be PRD.
Yeah, and they're requesting, when they request annexation, most likely, most of the time these days, if they're requesting annexation, it's because that property owner's got a contract to sell to somebody who's going to develop it. And the contract is basically pending the annexation and the zoning that the developer's wanting. And so, if we annexed it, zoned it R1, and then two or three months later, we look at zoning, we could do that certainly. But then if the zoning doesn't become approved, then the landowners in the city may not want to be in the city. And then also you have, in reality, you're, you're pushing, basically, you're changing the kind of the dynamic, I guess, between the buyer and the seller a little bit.
And the reason I said, it's just, they're, they're coming in as PRD impacting the property. But I think what you guys are proposing helps alleviate, impact that property. I'll go on to the next item. And I asked you this once before, how is the seven thousand, nine thousand, eleven thousand percentages determined? Was it kind of, y'all hung in on that?
Well, we, we looked at, of course, we, we looked at different lot sizes. We looked at six, eight, and ten as a range and different things. And we landed on seven, nine, and eleven. As far as the percentages, we, we, we didn't, again, we were looking around. We were trying to figure out a way to kind of break up so that not every lot is basically the same size. And so, it was more or less roughly a third.
Trying to push every, the higher density to the inside rather than on the perimeter?
With regards to the budding properties, absolutely, yes.
All right. The.
Jerome, it also helps alleviate the quote-unquote cookie cutter term that's thrown around out there, too.
On the size of the lot.
Yeah, the lot sizes are varied, yeah.
Then we also mentioned thirty percent of the gross land area has to be open space. And then fifteen percent of that has to be usable, which.
I think, I think you've got the number switched. You're right. It's fifteen percent of the, is open space.
Gross area.
Yeah, and then thirty percent of that, fifteen percent, has to be usable in some manner.
If you multiply that together, then it's four and a half percent of the gross area. And I was wondering, you know, how do y'all feel about the four and a half percent of the gross area being usable on a high-density PRD? Do y'all think that's sufficient?
We've actually had discussion about that and even had them look at other communities and what other communities have done. And I think this is what we ended up agreeing upon, but we did have that discussion. And I know Raquel's talked about that quite a bit.
The, you know, if we pushed it to fifty percent, then you'd come out with seven and a half percent, you know? It's just something to think about, you know, because a high density is a high density. And, you know, they, they need some open space in there to recreate and everything.
Well, one of the things that, one of the things that, when you're talking about open space, what we run into a lot, Jerome, with your engineering background, you probably understand some of this. The topo that we're seeing most of this being offered in far exceeds four and a half percent of green space. Because green, you know, you could put walking trails in as part of a, an amendment, I'm sorry, an amenity.
Amenity.
Pools, things like that. And we're, I think we see actually more than four and a half percent. We're looking for a baseline here. And that's kind of what we all talked about in the green deal.
Well, I think the usable space is the term. You can have land out there and it, you know, steep slopes, rocks, and not usable. And.
That's why we're asking for walking trails and things like that.
Yeah, that was my concern. I think there's another item on the agenda that, you know, probably leads to that point. And then, Kevin, I asked you this. When we throw, throw around the term density units per acre, we're using the gross land area.
Correct.
Not, we're not excluding detention, we're not excluding floodplain, which in my opinion, kind of skews the density. If you take out all those unusable areas, you come in with a much higher density count than you would including those areas. So, I kind of want some feedback on that, if you don't mind.
Sure, yeah, that's something, I mean, we do.
And I talked to the county as well about this.
Yeah, most, I can't say every jurisdiction, because I don't know where every jurisdiction's ordinance is. But most jurisdictions, at least I'm aware of, most people do look at density as the gross acres. You know, if it's five hundred houses on a hundred acres or it's five hundred houses on fifty acres and fifty acres of open space, whatever it is, it's still five hundred, five acre, whatever, whatever the density is ever is. And so, that, that is what we, you.
But if half of it's floodplain, the density where you're building, how, how, is actually way greater, yeah.
Yeah, sure, sure, the density where you're building is higher, but you have the common areas. Whereas if you were developed, say, as an R2 or R3, you spread that out, you know, and don't have the common space. The density might be the same or close to the same, but on the overall max, as far as the overall property. So, it's just a trade-off. Do you want the common areas or do you want, you know, the bigger lots with, and develop more property?
We've actually had this discussion many times. HG and I have probably asked the same question a dozen times. And honestly, one of the things that I do with everything that comes before us is I do the calculation myself. So, I see what they're building and I figure out how much, it tells you how much land's not being used. And then I do that calculation to find out how much of the used land, what's the density? And, and I've brought up in several council meetings, if it, you know, it says it's three point four, but I call it the real density is like six, right? So, we've, we've had those discussions. But what we keep hearing from Kevin and the developers we've talked to is we would be the only ones that do it that way. And, and, yeah, in the state, maybe. And that's the thing, is I'm being told we, nobody else does it like that.
I kind of got a compromise on that, Jerome, by getting the houses moved a little further apart.
Right.
Instead of having five-foot setbacks to seven and a half-foot setbacks.
And that, that was kind of how we ended up with the eleven thousand. I can tell you that the first numbers were much lower. And it was, it was quite a discussion.
I'm not criticizing y'all, I'm just trying to understand.
We, we've had these same conversations and how we got to the seven, nine, and eleven was kind of a compromise of not counting every square inch of unusable space, right?
So, there's one last comment, and I'd love for y'all to entertain me on, on this, is, my question is, with like the Beauchanes and the, let's see, the Lisa Reasonover Estate tracks, how does this alleviate or minimize the number of houses they have down there alongside property line?
So, specifically Lisa.
Okay, so, here, here's what I'd propose. Is there any way we can get a required twenty-foot landscape buffer where it does about R1 or RM, make that a requirement? So, we're not trying to figure out what their lot widths are in those three categories, or the eleven thousand square foot category. You know, can we, because we don't need them negotiating with the developer about putting in that. And I, I know y'all have spent a lot of time out there.
Yeah, so, I'd like Kevin to talk about the buffer, because I think there are some buffer requirements already. But on the lot sizes, that's where we came up with the eleven thousand and the seventy percent size.
Yeah.
Specifically, talking about Mabel Farms, that's what drove that conversation, was that initially she had nineteen lots along her lot size. And we reduced that to like fourteen or fifteen. If this same thing came in with the eleven thousand, it would probably only be twelve.
But you're still not dictating the lot width. You can line a bunch of narrow lots, eleven thousand square foot lots along, along that property line, and actually increase that number.
Their approved PRD showed us what they were asking for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, and we did.
I mean, are y'all opposed to a twenty-foot buffer?
Well, we did that on this one, as I recall. Did we not, Kevin?
It was thirty-foot.
Yeah.
There, there was a buffer required.
Yeah.
When you're, when you're reviewing the PRD.
Well, yeah, we're typically looking for that in planning and then council level, too. But.
It's not in that, is it?
Are you saying you wanted to make it a standard part of the process? That's what you're saying.
So, Kevin, let's talk through that. Let's talk through what, doing exactly what Jerome's talking about would do.
I mean, basically, it would be, it would be a standard requirement. It wouldn't be, it would be a point of discussion. It would just be something that would be required, let's say, in the, in the Mabel Farms development. Specifically, they had PRDs on the other two sides and not on that side. I mean, it would, it would require those lots to be a little bit deeper, obviously, because they're going to have a. It's not, it wouldn't be a major change from what we're already doing, I don't think. I mean, it's something that, it's something that often there's some existing landscape area already there. Not always, but often there's tree, existing tree canopy they can preserve and then supplement if they need to be and all that kind of stuff. I would recommend, somewhat selfishly, I guess, go ahead and approve this tonight, is what I would hope would happen. And then we could look at making that change and bringing that back to you at your next meeting, or planning commission meeting, and then come back to you with that other tweak, if that's something the council would like to consider.
Well, and I think then you're going to get into, is it an A, B, C, D buffer? I mean, what, what kind of buffer is it? Is there levels of buffers? And if it's got vegetation?
Well, I mean, we have that already built in somewhat. Like, if you had a situation where you had a commercial, some sort of commercial deal.
Or industrial or something.
Or if you had some higher, say, a multifamily, a pod with some multifamily in it next to a single family, that's already built in. I think what Mr. Dempsey's talking about is just, single family next to a single family, we typically don't require a buffer. You know, because the use is the same, the single family to single family. I think that's really what he's talking about more.
Yeah, what he's talking about, I think, more is if it's PRD, a budding, RM, or R1.
Right.
If it was PRD to PRD, probably no buffer is required. But PRD to RM, R1, so, kind of like what we did with the lot sizes, the seventy percent. If it is a budding commercial or residential property that's a higher zoning, then the buffer might be required, is what I think you're saying. I'd almost speak.
That's correct.
And I, I did some quick calculations, because you, you kind of stumped me. I wasn't, I wasn't thinking when you said, you know, narrow, long, narrow lots. So, I remember now what we talked about there was, with those eleven thousand square foot lots, you would still have your ten-foot setbacks on each side. So, that's twenty feet wide minimum. And then you got a forty or fifty-foot house in the middle.
Right.
So, you're at seventy or eighty feet wide as the minimum they could build it, no matter what they did. To get to eleven thousand square feet, that's a hundred and twenty deep and eighty foot wide, that's almost a square lot. It's a little bit, but you couldn't really get long and narrow because it's not a lot of acreage, really. But, so it really wouldn't be, you know, small, narrow lots. They would be almost square.
Well.
But, yeah, I see your point.
I've seen some tall, skinny houses.
Yeah, well, and that's the good thing about a PRD is when that comes to planning. But when those come to planning, we, as a PRD, we have a lot more control over that.
And, and I understand that, that we've got control, but why not just, instead of negotiating with the developer, go ahead and make it a requirement?
Well, it's certainly good.
For the RM and R1. And then that way, we're not asking the homeowners that live there to meet with the developer and see what they can work out. It's just, hey.
I wouldn't have any problem with that at all, especially backing up to the types of properties.
What y'all done is great. I'm not criticizing. I just think we need add one more step to it.
So, what if we look at, going ahead and doing public hearing and looking at voting on this tonight? And if this moves forward, then what if we let planning commission have discussion in regards to this specific? And I'm going to be honest with you, probably once this moves forward, there's going to be some other tweaks that may end up having to be done. So, so, okay, any other comments or questions?
But to Jerome's point, I don't think there's one like this that we've not required of buffer, but I hear you. If we're not required, if we're not missing it anyway, why not put it in there?
Okay, any other comments or questions before we move to public hearing? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing, so I will go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Motion we approve?
A motion to approve. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And Kevin, if you will, at, staff will look at buffers and whether it's next planning commission meeting or the next one, y'all will have some discussion.
We got a little time for next planning commission meeting. We should be able, that should be a fairly simple amendment to draft. We could probably put something on the next planning.
Thank you.
Perfect.
It seems like you could add it right where it talks about the seventy percent, seventy percent and buffering.
Right.
Okay, we will move on to item nine, which is new business. And our first item is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and PRD zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel eighteen point zero zero, requested by Jared Cunningham with Catalyst Design Group on behalf of the Rose C. Neal Revocable Trust containing twenty-nine point seven nine acres. The property's located on Rocky Fork Amicable Way. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a annexation request as well as a zoning request that was, came in together. This is one that you all looked at last month on first reading and did defer to tonight, so it is still on first reading tonight. This is a, PRD is proposed, is for, has been changed, as we discussed at your workshop, from what you looked at on last month. This is for, the revision is for eighty-three single-family lots on twenty-nine point seventy-nine acres. That's about two point seven nine units per acre. It's a reduction of two lots and a little, slightly, slightly less dense than what you looked at last month. The proposed minimum lot dimensions have been revised. Previously, all lots were fifty-five by one-twenty-five. These are now, sixty-nine of them are fifty-six by one-twenty-five, fourteen are sixty-foot wide, which translates to basically seven thousand and nine thousand square foot minimums. The actual lots that are shown, there's a breakdown, it's about fifty-five, there are seven thousand, twenty-four, there are nine, and four, there are eleven. And the lots that do a butt saddle road, which is a development zoned R3 that are all at least nine thousand square feet. The house sizes would range from twenty-four hundred to thirty-five hundred square feet, which is a revision from the previous request, which had sixteen hundred, thirty-five hundred square feet. Houses would be finished with brick, stone, and concrete siding with the added requirement that any rear-facing elevation fronting Rocky Fork Amicable Road would be entirely brick. Access is shown from Rocky Fork Amicable Road as well as a connection to a stub street in the courtyard of Stewart Creek Development. And all of our current requirements with regard to setbacks and parking and open space would be met. Proposed amenities do include walking trails, covered gazebo seating areas, and a totlite, a small playground area. Planning commission did review this and did recommend approval.
Okay, we had quite a bit of discussion about this last time. Are there any comments or additional questions on this development?
Got a few, and I promise, next time.
Sure. No, no, that's what you're here for. Go ahead.
Is, I know y'all had discussion on a thirty-four-foot sheer wall, and you guys changed that where they're grading up on top of the hill there. Is that area that's shown in woods that is above CUD's elevation line, is that usable area to the development? Will it be usable area?
It's, it's not shown as used to be usable area. I mean, the, the previous development, different developer, this came in several months ago. It had a hundred lots on it, and it actually went further westward into that hillside. And so, that's the development that had the sheer wall. At its highest point was about thirty-four feet. This is more of a three-to-one slope. We're not getting as far into it, and they are sloping it down. It's really not going to be usable, or it's not going to be improved in any way to be usable. Certainly will be open area.
So, no walking trails or.
There's nothing proposed. There's nothing proposed in that area.
Anything?
Everything's more concentrated on the east side of the development as far as the usable areas.
It seemed like that'd be a good opportunity to set up on that high elevation. I think the elevation difference on that side is, what, a hundred and fifty feet?
It's, it's.
It's a lot.
It's a lot, it's a very steep piece of property.
Yeah. Okay, the, and then, you know, we keep annexing everything in PRD on Rocky Fork Ammerville. What are their plans to improve that roadway, to try to get traffic out of there as well as Ammerville Road in the future?
I know that the town has, design is underway on at least phase one of improvements to Rocky Fork Ammerville Road.
Can you describe, you know, from where to where?
I think Mr. King probably could, he's, he's, he's much more involved in that project day to day than I am.
I live on the west side, I deal with that traffic trying to get over, I was late, almost coming to City Hall.
We, matter of fact, Dave and I were at an event last night with the Commissioner of TDOT and had quite a long conversation about the Ammerville Road area and the interchange there, and what a need it is for us. And then, be honest, we, we have got to continue to talk to our legislators about Ammerville Road because of.
Can the town partner with the state to improve Ammerville Road?
We did that with Sam Ridley.
Right.
Yes, and those are things that we were actually talking to him about. And what I wanna make sure people understand is, the interchange at Ammerville Road is separate from the road.
Right.
Because now with the choice lanes that are coming on the board, that's kinda put that on pause. So I don't want there to be a confusion between Ammerville Road, what you're talking about, and the interchange.
And I talked to Charles and Dave, there's small opportunities out there as far as right turn lanes, a right turn lane in front of McDonald's to get up on the interstate, a right turn lane at Dunkin' Donuts, Steve, your parents live out there, you travel, travel that area a lot. So, you know, even before the big project, there's a lot of small things we could do, I think.
Yep.
We've worked, we've worked with Region Three traffic, they will not let us use the shoulders. We was gonna put one, you know, going outbound, using the shoulder to make a right turn lane, going off the ramp, going towards Nashville.
In one, oh, towards.
Towards Nashville, they won't let us, and on the other, they won't let us use the shoulder, because you get too near that mast arm. So TDOT will not let us use those, improve those shoulders.
Not even with the guard rail there?
No, they won't let us, even if the guard rail's there, they won't let us use the shoulder, because they don't want that buffering up against the guard rail. So Tom and I, we've had this discussion with TDOT to do some Band-Aid type project and fixes, and so far, we haven't had any success.
And who'd you speak with at TDOT?
Stanley Sumner, Region Three Traffic.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, we, we also looked at restriping and possibly shifting lanes.
Narrowing.
Right, Tom looked at that, and he had a consultant look at that and do a traffic study and didn't show improvement. Was trying to put two full turn lanes in and then just put one through lane going westbound and see if that would help. But from their traffic point of view, that didn't help that much.
They're holding up the interchange, and we're wanting to do something, surely, we've gotta do something.
We've done all we can do until TDOT allows us to make any improvements.
So if it came here in February.
Go ahead, Dave.
I'm sorry, Dave, go ahead.
Thank you. The, the interesting part about this choice lanes project is that, at least for phase one, they're currently talking about ending that just south of Sam Ridley. Now, when they put this out for RFP, there may be some, some other design options that these firms will come back with, maybe they'll wanna do the whole thing all at once. I don't, we don't know that yet. The, the encouraging thing at this point is that they recognize that with them just doing phase one, that where does that leave Ammerville Road? They recognize that, and I think we're gonna be having some discussions here shortly with them about that very issue. I don't know, I don't know what the conclusion of that will be at this point, but I, I will say that it's at least encouraging that they're recognizing that that's an issue for us, and they're willing to, to, to sit down at the table and talk about it.
So, and my answer to you, Charles, is if we can't do anything, why do we keep continuing to annex high-density developments in, in that area? That's only making the problem worse.
So, Councilman, I, I'd be happy to address that one. I don't necessarily think that's a, a question for Charles, I'll be happy to address it. But I, I think the reality of, of it is, is that currently, the, the traffic counts that we have have not sparked large-scale projects out in the west area. I think we need to recognize, though, that as we continue to do the development out there, that we need to address it at the appropriate time to get ahead of it. And that's, I think, something that we need to look at, am I mistaken?
No, that's right, like I said, kinda back to your original point, like on Rocky Fork Ammerville Road, from the Derby Run area up to about Morton Lane, that phase one project is under, in appraisals right now, so it's in right away, we're getting appraisals completed now to get that first phase one of that widened out to three lanes.
When do you think that would start construction?
Uh, just as, like I said, right away, it's hard to judge how long it's gonna take. Most of it's easements, because we have an eighty-foot right away, and the developers on the one side, they have dedicated forty-foot off-center line, so we do have that right away. It's mainly what we're going in now is construction easements and drainage easements.
So when do you think we could start construction?
Hopefully, within, they can close these out in eight months or so, and then get it ready to go, if we can get the appraisals done and then get the.
So you think next summer?
Hopefully, like I said.
And all I'm saying, I live out there, I deal with it every day, and it's very frustrating, and I've heard it from a lot of people, to drive that area of Ammerville Road. And, and when we opened up Enos Springs Road West, we dunked all that traffic from Old Nashville Highway out to that area as well. So, I mean, they were eventually gonna get there, but they don't go under the interchange.
But that's kind of our.
I just, we just need to be proactive.
Well, like I said, that extension, that's one way, that if you're going from east to west side, you don't have to go through the Sam Ridley or Ammerville Road interchanges. That, that with the choice lanes, that may be more we're looking at is different ways to cross the interstate that don't involve an interchange, just to move that traffic away from those interchanges.
Maybe years down the road, but we continue to annex and approve.
Well, one of the things we have to be careful of too, I think, is, because the town's not the only people that will develop. So if the town doesn't take it and develop it and get the property taxes off of it, the county may very well do it. Don't know that, but they could, right?
So.
So one of the things we tried to do, and you know this, you sat on planning for a long time with me, we tried to get the Rocky Fork Road interchange in, and we've been trying that for years, right? Then in February, they came in and they told us, hey, we're switching the plan, we're gonna do convenience lanes now, right? And then, so, then, if you go down to Ammerville, like you said, we thought we were getting the diverging diamond plan in there, and in February, that all changed. So it's kind of a moving target, trying to hit TDOT, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a moving target.
Yeah, I think there was also, and you may have been talking about this, and I lost the conversation, but right now, if you're going Ammerville Road, I guess it's west, the four lanes kinda stop right there at One Mile Lane. And I, I think we could probably look at taking that on to maybe Morton Lane to ease with the traffic right around the Seminary Road area.
That's where the school drops off.
The school drops off.
It's a state road.
It, it is, but potentially, potentially look at trying to do something there. We talked about, you know, every development, we're making them put in right turn lanes. So eventually, you know, basically what TDOT said in February was that they're not gonna widen Ammerville Road from, from the interstate to Eight Forty. They're not gonna do it. So the only thing that's gonna happen is you're gonna have a series of right lane, right turn lanes, kinda like we have out there now, where you're gonna go in and out and in and out of these three-way, or these three-lane chances. So as these develop, those turning lanes are required, those training, those traffic studies are required, and I think that's essentially what the state's plan is for Ammerville Road. And then, the last thing, you know, my view on the development partially is, we're also gotta be careful about property rights. This was kinda the thing that happened with Mabel Farms, right? But it's a similar conversation, is there's a lot of families that have owned this land for many years, and they, this is their, their inheritance for their children. In some cases, this changes the trajectory of their life for generations. And if we just stop annexing or say no, now we could be putting typical situations where they can't, they can't continue to maintain their property.
Totally understand that, but we've also gotta look at how it impacts.
Yeah.
The existing residents.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that, and I think that's what we've been doing.
We gotta come up with a solution, and not just, we can't do this, we've tried and that won't work. We've got to do something.
Well, hopefully we'll be able to help.
A right turn lane in front of Dunkin' Donuts, is that possible?
That would be something we could go back to the state, they, and just get a right away permit, that wouldn't be as big a thing as getting a right.
Where are you talking about?
On Sam Ridley.
Dunkin' Donuts, on, on Ammerville Road.
Oh, okay.
Not Sam Ridley, we're over on the other side of the interstate. I didn't switch channels.
I don't hit a lot of their locations.
Oh, one at One Mile.
The convenience store at One Mile Lane.
I got you, okay, yeah, I got you.
Now, people are sitting there staging up at that signal, wanting to make a turn going out on Baker Road, and they can't.
Right, now that's something we can, it's easier to do, because we can go in and get a right.
There needs to be two lanes out there and the signals synchronized. I don't wanna occupy all their time, but for me, and I would hope all of y'all, I wanna see something done out there. That's, that's part of the reason I ran, is, is the traffic and the development.
But I don't want it to come across as we've not been trying to do some of those things. And some of it were, were handcuffed in regards to what they'll allow us to do and what they want. But I'm also not saying that we shouldn't exhaust all avenues in, in doing that. And so I think some of the things.
For me, and Dave, and Charles, and Tom, and whoever else.
We can't do that. We can't do that, we can't sit in on any meeting that you're, that any other council member's on.
Well, just one person, whoever needs to, somebody needs to brainstorm, you know? Not necessarily me, but just to try to see what options we can come up with.
Okay.
Mayor, if I may, just kinda go ahead, Lee Road, phase one, at one point, three miles, that section's under design now, and it's looking to possibly go to bid December of twenty-five. And Cook Slade, phase one, which is where the new development's going in there, due to right away, it may be like May of twenty-six, when that could possibly go. Because we're trying to work on that one realignment there, but we have a lot of utility issues that's gonna slow that down to try to get the road, that hill and curve out before that development comes in. And we worked with the developer, so our roadway plans will match their entrance. So those are the ones that we're currently, they are in design.
Thank you.
Other comments or questions on item one under new business? Okay, seeing nothing else, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second? Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
No.
Motion passes. We'll move on to item two, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R three zoning of property on Tax Map Fifty J, Group E, parcel fifteen point zero zero, requested by Proverbs Build Homes containing eighty-nine one-hundredths of an acre. The property's located at one-three-nine Neal Avenue.
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a request for annexation for one tract of land at one-thirty-nine Neal Avenue. It's about twenty-five hundred feet kinda north of the intersection with Ammerville Road, about two-hundred-and-fifty feet south of the intersection with Cloverland Drive. Land is planned with support medium density, single family in this area. Shrining zoning is the Belmont PRD and I two in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services to this area, except for water, which would be provided by CUD, and they have indicated that can be fire flow requirements in this area. In addition to the annexation of the property, the Planning Commission did recommend annexation for approximately two-hundred-and-forty linear feet of the existing right of way of Neal Avenue in front of this parcel. That was per staff recommendation, there is an existing house located on this property. The Planning Commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions or comments on this?
Think they're just gonna subdivide it into three other lots?
There's enough land there for three lots, there's an existing house on the property, they were actually, when I was out and put this to sign, they were actually.
They were what again, I'm sorry?
They were actually, when I went out there to put the sign up, initial sign up, they were actually renovating that house that's out there now. So I believe they're actually gonna keep that house. They've got enough road frontage for three lots at two-hundred-and-forty feet, and an R three. But where that existing house is situated, I think it would be pretty difficult to build two more houses, I think. If they, if they're keeping that existing house, there would only be one additional house, there would only be enough road frontage for one additional house.
Other questions or comments?
Well, will site plan come in of that, Kevin, or?
There wouldn't be a site plan, there would be a subdivision plan, so.
Okay. I was just thinking about the, I guess, the northerly house that abuts that.
That's in county?
Whether, how far off that property line do you think they, they could build with?
Well, R three has a ten-foot minimum side setback.
Okay. So it looks like they might tear that house down and build three.
Again, they certainly could, but again, they were working to do some repairs and renovations to it, so I don't know.
That house to the, to the north is in the county, is that correct?
Yeah, north and across the street.
Right, and it backs up to industrial, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so because it backs up to industrial, even this lot, we would require a buffer in there, right? The one on the lot, yeah, on the back.
Yeah. And, and there was a buffer required, I think, in that Belmont, when that pub came in, many, that was many years ago, before we, we made some changes to our buffer requirements. I think there was a buffer put in there when that residential one came in, that was in the project in the south.
Kevin, I was trying to recall, did South Park come before Belmont?
Yes.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, South Park, and this, where Belmont is, was originally zoned industrial as well, and then it, it got changed to the PRD.
South Park continued to grow that way. Initially, it was just out by Legends.
Other questions or comments?
So you were talking about there was a buffer, does it no longer exist?
The buffer I was talking about was on the development in the south, I'm just saying it was required, because the industrial that was already in place when they built the Belmont PRD, there was a buffer required at that time. Now, that was probably fifteen years ago or more now, so I don't know if those homeowners have maintained it or, or not on each individual lot. It was required to be put in place as a part of the development.
So this is an R three request, and just about everything out, well, Belmont beyond there, on the county side, a lot of R three dwelling, right?
What's in the county, what's in the county is RM for the most part.
Well, kinda, that's their zoning, right?
That's their zoning, yeah.
They're probably on Septic, aren't they?
They're all Septic, they're all on Septic.
That's why the R's are as big as they are. So if this is an R three request, to Steve's point, would we then, can we require an R three a buffer to the industrial side, or is that already required?
We would, yeah, we would look at requiring a buffer to the back.
Right.
But not necessarily, again, because the single family to single family, our owners would not require a buffer there.
Almost doesn't make sense.
On the north side, but on the east side where they're abutting, which is, I mean, it's.
Be consistent, yeah.
Yeah, so that would be what we would require there, when the, when the plaque comes in.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of tax map twenty-eight, partial thirty-four point zero zero, to go from R-four to PRD, requested by Yad Ishak. The property requested to be rezoned, contains approximately four point three-two acres, and is located at six oh eight Rock Springs Road.
Yeah, this is a rezoning request on Rock Springs Road. There's, there's actually two addresses, there's actually two existing homes on the property, there's a six oh eight and also a six, six fourteen, uh, Rock Springs Road. It's about a hundred-and-seventy-five feet east of the intersection with Mason Tucker Drive. Land use plan would support medium density, single-family in this area. Surrounding zoning is R-four and, uh, PRD, which are the Spring Branch Townhomes PRD, which is to the east and north. There are, as I said, two existing houses on this property, which would be removed as a part of the development. This proposed PRD is for ten single-family houses and thirteen townhomes, so it's a total of twenty-three houses on four point three-two acres, which is about five point three-two per acre. The minimum house size would be fifteen hundred square feet, uh, with two-car garages, uh, would be finished with a mix of brick and concrete siding. Uh, one access point is shown to Rock Springs Road with all units accessing the internal private street. All houses would be sold via horizontal property regime without the VHOA owning and maintaining the common areas. A type-C landscape buffer is shown along the western property line, abutting the existing single-family houses. Adequate parking is provided, and the proposed amenities, um, are, are a dog park and a playground area. The planning commission did review this request, did recommend approval with a couple of conditions. Uh, one, the existing tree canopy is required to be preserved as much as possible in that landscape buffer area, with landscaping being added as necessary to be compliant with the type-C buffer requirements. And the facades of the buildings, which have direct visibility from Rock Springs Road, are required to have additional brick added to include a minimum of the entirety of the first floor. We did receive revised plans today, which are not in your packet, uh, that would, um, address those two conditions. So just so you're aware of that, uh, if you do pass this tonight, I will put that in the, in the packet for, for your workshop and second reading.
Tell me what you said again.
About the conditions?
Do we, that, we revise plans?
Oh, the revised plans, we receive them today. I mean, the planning commission met just this past Thursday, so we were, we, we did receive revised plans today. Just, you know, obviously with the, can't planning commission tonight, and the packet had to go out Friday, we didn't have time to, to get those in there through, through your packet. But they, again, if you pass this tonight, we would, we'll get it to you for your next, next meeting.
Kevin, can you refresh my memory, what, what exactly is R-four?
R-four, uh, you can do a couple of things in R-four. You can build duplexes on, uh, each, a duplex on a ten thousand square foot lot, so two units on ten thousand. You can also build single-family, uh, homes on a six thousand square foot lot minimums. That's what's allowed by right. Now, those are lots, so you have to build a public street and, and all that, but, but, uh, that was, that is what isn't allowed to use, is either duplexes or single-family. This would be single-family and townhomes is what they're looking at doing with this PRD. And also, again, kinda having it all set up as a, with a common, um, with an HPR and a common open areas, or owning all the common areas, the HOA.
Kevin, um, the, it said that, um, it's fifteen hundred square feet, and that's including the two-car garage, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. If we compare this to what's being built, decided, my understanding is that those are anywhere from about eighteen hundred square feet to twenty-four, twenty-five, is that correct?
Yeah, the kind of the, there's kind of a range they gave us of fifteen to eighteen hundred on the townhomes and fifteen to twenty-two hundred, because there's some single-family in that development as well, kind of, uh, in the same, directly north of where they're proposing the single, detached, single-family homes. So they would be, uh, at least, the minimums would be roughly the same, but, um, they would have probably a larger, the higher ranges would be, would be larger. And most of the homes in there do have garages, not, there are some, and, uh, everything near this development is, would, would, uh, do ha, all have garages. There are some central, we get central kinda area of that development that do not have any garages.
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
I'm sorry.
It's not just me.
You're talking about.
I didn't understand that, about the, what did you say about the garages?
The, 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 the develop, this proposed development has a garage in all the units, a two-car garage. The adjoining development to the east and the north, um, does not have garages in all their units. They have garage, the ones that are closest to this development do have garages, but there was a, a kind of a, within the, kinda the middle part of that development, there were some townhomes without garages as part of that PRD. And those are probably on the smaller end of that range of the fifteen to eighteen hundred, because they don't have a garage, would be my assumption.
Can I ask you one more, clarify one thing you said? So you said with R-four, they could build single-family lo, homes on six thousand square foot lots?
Correct.
Okay, so I did the math on the four point three-two acres, that means they could build by right thirty-two units on this four point three-two acres under R-four.
You probably would be a little less.
Yeah, right, you gotta count roads and all that stuff.
You're gonna have to build a road in there and that sort of thing.
But compared to the twenty-three they're proposing, it's not much difference.
It's, for, you're probably roughly the same, once you build a road in there and that sort of thing, yeah.
And that's by right, meaning we would be, they would even have to be coming to us, right?
Come to the planning commission, correct? And the property directly, again, to the west and across the road is all R-four. And there's a mix of single-family and duplexes in those, in that area.
You said ten thousand square foot lots for the duplexes.
Right, two units on ten thousand.
Using the same logic, they would be able to build about eighteen and nineteen duplex units by right.
Okay, the, are you done? Sorry, I was gonna make sure, okay. You said that the new plans would be sent if we approved this. The, the amended plan is adding the brick on the end buildings, and what else was, were they required to do?
The, the buffer area, they had already shown a buffer area along that west side, abutting that existing residential development there. And all, the only thing that was added there was not just, don't bulldoze down and plant new trees, keep that existing trees as much as possible in that area, and then supplement it.
I've, I've got a comment, Kevin. You mentioned the note, maintain when possible or for the tree row. And I know if you leave it to, um, certain contractors, that, that's open game on all those trees. Who, who makes that decision?
Well, that would, if, again, if this is approved, a site plan has to come back. And so what we have done in the past, I mean, it's, it's been successful, uh, is that before they get a grading permit, we put up the orange mesh fencing at that boundary line, wherever that is.
Right.
And tell them, don't cross that line.
Yeah.
And then if something happens, if there's a dead tree in there and they won't take it out, we can go do that, you know, and then supplement.
Do they have to replace the, you know, because I think, since somewhere these, the elevation view says these are gonna be thirty feet high. One, one-sided though, on the rendering, I think it.
Right.
And it's gonna be staring into those people along Mason Tucker, and that tree row should, you know, is very valuable. And I know there's a landscape buffer, but I don't know, does it list items down through there to be planted? Is that, that type-C?
That's the type-C buffer, which is, it's spelled out in our zoning ordinance, what's that, what is required.
Uh, my big concern was the saving of the existing trees.
Right.
You know, for privacy, and then the other comment, you know, all down Rock Springs Road there, I know we're trying to feed more residents into the downtown area to help support the merchants down there. Is there a roadway project, and Charles may have mentioned it, I wasn't paying attention, for Rock Springs Road? And then I know eventually Imperial Boulevard will make a loop around to Mason Tucker by the senior citizens.
Correct.
Future site. Are there opportunities for those developments to tie onto that as well?
Um, the, there is one of the developments, uh, not Spring Branch, I think is the one next to that, um, would have, once Imperial Boulevard gets extended, there is, there would be a place for, for that connection.
And there's interconnections where, possible with all these.
With, with Imperial Boulevard there, yes. There's not, my, I'm not aware of any plans on road projects on Rock Springs Road. We do have a sidewalk project that we're working on putting a sidewalk there.
This is a private road, correct?
Yes.
And it's not gonna join to the northerly property?
That's correct, which is also a private street.
Is that a, that's not a firefighting hazard or anything?
Fire department with the turnaround that's there, they were okay.
Okay.
But widening Rock Springs Road down through there would put that road pretty much on their front porch almost.
If we did it any further out, and our thing is trying to use that as a traffic calming, because once you come into Front Street, you've got to get that traffic slowed down. And that was one of the major concerns with the residents out there was the speed along there. So we're using, keeping it a two-lane. Like I said, we're adding the sidewalk out all the way to Mason Tucker, and eventually to Old Nashville Highway. We're using that as a traffic calming to keep the speeds down before you get into Front Street.
But we are looking at a roads, Rock Springs project for Old Nashville Highway out.
Intersections.
Intersection, yeah.
Yes, yeah, right, at Rock Springs and, uh, Old Nashville Highway, like I said, that's, uh, been let, that contract has gone out to consultant, and surveys should start there, but, uh, put, uh, extra turn lanes and through lanes through there. So, uh, that is coming, and like I said, hopefully the Sam Ridley, Old Nashville Highway, that project is ready to go to construction as soon as T-Doc gives us the notice to proceed.
Kevin, I'm gonna go back to my original comment again, kind of looking at apples to apples. The, the product that we have to the right is eighteen hundred square foot townhomes, including the garage. The new product that's going in here is fifteen hundred square feet, including the garage, is that a fair statement?
Yes, as, as far as the minimum, yes.
Okay.
Other questions or comments?
So you're concerned, Jerry, is it that they're, the, the size is too small because they, with the garage?
I'm, I'm a little con, just concerned is being consistent with what we've just done beside there.
It's not consistent with what you've approved previously, the size.
That's my, that's my only concern. Maybe not so much the size, but just being consistent.
I'm not for certain, but I would say that the houses that are running up and, up on Mason Tucker, that are abutted from behind, are probably fifteen hundred square feet there.
Probably about right.
Other questions or comments?
I just, I drove out there and looked at it today, because I was very apprehensive about it also, I just, you know, I, it's. But, you know, after driving through there and look at what's next to it, looking at what will happen there, and then, you know, driving up through Mason Tucker, I felt more comfortable with it, it was, uh, more suited to the neighborhood than I had originally thought that it was.
Kevin, do we have renderings on those?
As far as, yeah, in your.
Packet?
Yeah, they're in your packet, as far as what the homes look like, and it, I mean, they're, and again, they're, the renderings don't reflect the, what you have, doesn't it reflect the, the, what they've added that we'll, we'll get to you?
Yeah, I think, for me, the biggest, I think, concern I had was the fact that it's R-four already, and what we could end up with if we don't.
Right.
Work with them and negotiate something here.
That's true.
Because duplexes and single-family homes on six thousand square foot lots would be pretty tight. And of course, this does include, at least in their drawing, a dog park, a playground, you know, the mail kiosk, the turnaround, all of that at top.
It's got windows on the garage doors.
Got to.
They don't have the canopy, but the windows.
And they've got the, the guest parking and other things like that too as well, in addition to the driveway parking.
And is this, you said, brick and cement siding?
Yes.
I do have some concerns when we look at the renderings. It seems very cookie cutter-ish, and then when you look at the backside of them.
Pretty bland.
It, it's pretty institutional looking.
Yes.
But Kevin, you did say the side elevations on this side on Rock Springs are gonna be brick.
The, the building as close as to Rock Springs would have, would they have the first floor brick? Yes. And they have, developers representative is here and they're hearing what you're talking about, so. So they, they may have some.
I mean.
Further discussions.
I know with some of the other developments, and I understand we're in this in-between phase of what we're kind of trying to get to.
This one probably wouldn't qualify anyway, because it's under the twenty-five.
It's under, this one's under twenty-five, yeah.
That's, Scott already thought about that.
Yeah. But I still think.
Should we change it?
We have, but I still think we have the option to try to negotiate some of the things that we would like to see.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. I guess one of the things I thought about when I looked at it today was the, we're constantly looking for starter homes. And does this fall under, Mark, does this fall under that category?
Yeah, it will, most of your attached product now is a starter home. Kevin, I did hear you say the horizontal regime part of this.
Yes.
These are for sale.
Yeah, it would be an HOA, a third-party HOA, um, and basically the, the, the HOA would own everything outside the buildings themselves, even on the single-family side.
So it'd be maintained?
Correct, by that HOA. Including the street and every, all of that, yeah.
Oh, another thing, where you, you were comfortable with the number of parking spaces that were along there?
Yeah, the, the, the homes are thirty-eight feet away from the private roadway, and then they've got the guest parking at the back as well, which, I can't remember the exact total, I think it was half or a, a little over half of a space per unit, which is what we require. Then they got a couple near the front, near the bus stop, but, um, primarily in the, in the back.
Yeah, so this meets the four cars in the driveway requirement.
Correct.
Also, the, at least on the single-family, that, that they are ten feet apart, which is the PRD requirements.
You've got residential backing up the residential, but then you have a little bit of a buffer with the R-four product before you get into the R-six product. This is already, to Steve's point, it's already zoned R-four. So essentially, that could bring a, a much lesser appealing product under an R-four zoning and do it all R-four. So it's kinda like those apartments we ended up with over on Sam Ridley Parkway, that none of us really were too happy about having, but at least they came in and met with us and let us spruce it up, right? And so.
Well, and I guess that's where I'm at right now, is the, more of the aesthetic look of it at this point.
Mayor, I agree with you. The renderings probably could do some work.
Other questions or comments?
My only issue is if we leave it R-four, what are we gonna get?
Right.
But at the same time, we should try to make sure it's presentable.
Agreed.
I guess it's, uh, can we go back to the developer and ask him to make some changes to those side elevations?
He's, he's there.
There he is, speak of, speak of the dud.
So, hearing some of our concerns, is that something you think you all could do between first and second?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, really, the renderings that we've proposed, the main intent for zoning purposes is just to show y'all the material type, that we're, we're promising to do all masonry-type products, either hardy or brick. We proposed, uh, minimum elevation of, uh, the, uh, I call it, it's not called wainscoting, but the bricking around the outside of the building. We've promised to do bricking on the sides visible from Rock Springs. When we come through with the site plan, we'll have more fully rendered site, uh, architectural elevations. They won't be to this level because we'll have to show material percentages. They'll have to be very specific. So, at that point is when we'll come through with hopefully something with better, uh, varying roof lines and, uh, varying elevations, and try to soften up some of those concerns y'all have.
So, you're gonna, not just one single floor plan, you'll try to have a few that has different rendering looks?
Now, as far as the townhomes go, they will likely be similar. Hopefully, though, we'll be able to do some color changes in the, in the masonry product, but on the single-family, it's not gonna be the same product over and over. Um, we're, we're, we're gonna have to come up with two or three different options, and hopefully color options, so that, because nobody wants to walk into a development that they all look the same.
You don't know what door to go to if you're visiting.
The, the whole point in this, uh, development was not to copy, but to have, provide a similar product to what's next door. Um, I know there's a little bit of concern with the square footage. Um, they provided you a range. Uh, typically, when you get a range, you get the minimum, let's be honest.
Did you provide it with actual, what?
Well, I, we don't have the, the hard footprints yet, so that, that would come at the site plan level when we come to, uh, planning department, when we have literal footprints and literal elevations of what we're gonna build. Uh, but, I mean, uh, we're just, uh, stating a minimum of fifteen hundred, which was the same as what the neighbor said. They just threw in the extra eighteen hundred, and that just makes it look juicier, when really they promised the same thing.
And what, one thing I wanted to clarify, I think it's on page eleven, I think the ten-foot that I saw was actually talking about the setbacks between the townhomes. The single families are back down to the seven and a half.
Fifteen on the, uh, single family, I think.
So, they're only seven, they're, yeah, seven and a half between houses, fifteen total.
Right.
What's on Mason Tucker, what are they?
Which currently meets R4.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I just wanted to clarify what I stated. So, I thought I was reading it was for single family, it wasn't.
Well, and I guess one of my other concerns is, if you're talking about more detailed stuff, that's not gonna come back to us. That's only gonna be to the planning commission, and I don't wanna give the impression, I don't have faith in the planning commission at all, but I would like to hammer some of that out in front of us between first and second.
If you're okay, we could add some verbiage, uh, um, architecturalists to provide varying roof lines and, uh, front elevations and varying colors, as well as, um, uh, multiple floor plans for the single family in verbiage. That way, we're not redoing renderings, um, that are just meant to kind of tell you the materials. Um, but then you would have something hard in writing that says that it has to be varying, and at that point, planning staff would have to oblige to.
But, like, when we're looking at the townhome front elevation, and Kevin, we don't have that so the public can see it doing. Okay. Can we, from now on, just make sure that we put, just so with the public as we're talking about it, can know kind of what we're talking about and see it? Um, you know, this looks like the same unit, one after another. Do you know which one I'm talking about?
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, and Mark just said, you know, maybe if one had dormers as opposed to, what do you call that?
Something to change the roof line from a, you know, just a boring roof line, maybe put some dog dormers in there, whatever.
I completely understand.
But you said maybe mix the elevations a little bit, and I think that's what we're looking for.
And that's gonna be our intent. Um, yeah, and, and in, in reality, these 2D elevations are very, uh.
Pretty boring.
They're very boring. Once you get a 3D elevation, it really changes the character. Um, so hopefully, um, but we can put some verbiage to guarantee that we will provide varying roof lines and, uh, added interest at the townhomes, and go with multiple floor plans for the single family.
And also the back of the townhomes.
On page eleven is just, it looks like, yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have another development, either in Rutherford County, Williams County, somewhere around, that is similar to this, that y'all have done somewhere? So, we maybe can see what finished product looked like?
Um, I can't say this developer has done those at Stewart's Borough, but I can't say that this is a similar type product to that development. Um, I think this is a higher end. He's, uh, his intent is when people drive down the road, it will look consistent with the neighboring development. Um, I think the, the interesting thing about this one is it can kind of be a community with it not having all the connection points, and since it's such a short road, you'll be able to have kids out playing, uh, within this little area, and they can go up to the cul-de-sac without the worry of cross, of all that traffic. So, um, but as far as elevations, I'm happy.
So, what I'm understanding you to say is, there's no way to get renderings to us by the next meeting, but you can put something in writing?
We, we can put some verbiage that would guarantee that we provide that interest that you're looking for, and I can get with Kevin to come up with the verbiage that would probably be most covering.
I would like to see it.
Yeah.
I agree.
I, I completely understand. I, I, in the future, I'd like to provide more 3D elevations, so that you can kind of see those varying.
So, how long would it take you if you did provide renderings?
Uh, we'd have to get an architect and, uh, more deeply involved, and it would probably take him a couple months to get around at this point with us going into the holidays.
So, if we deferred now, rather than deny, that means first reading would move to next month, second reading move to January or February. Does that give you enough time?
I'm happy to try to work into the next one, and then if we can't, we could defer the second council if the verbiage is not good enough, but, um.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I'm just gonna be honest, I, 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 I'm struggling with verbiage. I want images.
Okay, so, that's where we're at. That's okay. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm happy to, to oblige to getting better elevations.
Saying you have to have everything, but just something better than what we have would be helpful.
So, knowing that, would you rather us go ahead and vote on first reading, knowing that something is coming on second, or would you rather us defer at this point?
I think I would rather try to move forward, and I'm going to apply some good pressure to some architects and see if I can get somebody who can get us.
Are you all comfortable with that, knowing that it could be? You would prefer defer?
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay either way, because we have the second reading.
Right.
If, if it doesn't produce, or it doesn't come, then we can either defer or deny there.
Yeah, exactly.
Right.
What if we have to make changes at that time, if we ask for more changes?
We still have deny or defer as an option.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm good with that. It's, um.
Well, it still gives us the opportunity to see it and, and turn it down, or defer it again, and let them go back and work on it some more.
This will give them the, uh, incentive to come with their best game.
Right.
Right.
That's kind of what I'm thinking. If we approve it now, it kind of sends our commitment that we're not just saying, no matter what you bring or money you spend, we're not interested in, but, um.
I agree. Bring us something, yeah.
Bring us something, right.
It's gotta come back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that would help keep me on track as well, as long as I can find an architect who can produce that quickly.
Yeah, and just, just so we're clear, you could also defer.
Yes, sir.
Before the next reading, you could contact Kevin and.
Yes, sir.
So, if you're not ready, don't bring it back to us.
Correct. I, I'm not gonna bring you anything that I, I don't think is ready for y'all.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin, anything else from you?
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Do we put that stipulation in the approval?
In the motion.
In the motion. So, um, I will open the floor for a motion.
Make a motion that we approve with the understanding or with the caveat that additional renderings will be provided by second reading.
Approvable, approvable renderings.
Yes, approvable, some that we will accept.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. You good, Amber?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Item four has the applicant requested to withdraw this, so we will move on from item four to item five, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of Tax Map Twenty-Eight, Partial Seventy-Two Point Zero Zero from PCD to C2 requested by JLJ Strategic Realty. The property requested to be rezoned contains sixty-nine one-hundredths of an acre and is located at the corner of Isabella Lane and President's Place. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is a piece of property is at the southwest corner of Isabella Lane and President Place. Land use plan does designate this property as part of the Sam Reilly Corridor Character Area, which would support a mix of retail uses and services for, uh, both local and regional customers. Surrounding zoning is C2, as well as PUD, which is the Isabella Lane Self-Store's, uh, bud, which is across the street. Um, existing approved PCD would allow quick service all and loop business. Uh, the zoning of this property prior to the rezoning to a PCD was, was C2, so the request is to go back to, uh, the original zoning. Uh, planning commission didn't review this request and recommended approval unanimously.
Questions on this piece of property?
Who, who owns this, Kevin, this property?
It's, uh, well, JLJ Strategic Realty, but it's, uh, Mr. John Lee Jr. It's the, John Lee Jr.
Is this the one that's like next to the liquor store there?
It is.
Okay.
It's regularly next to the liquor store.
It was approved for a Jiffy Lube or something.
Yeah, that's what the PCD was approved for. It was C2 prior to that.
I was thinking this was the, I was thinking this was the rental car on the other side, so that this was, uh.
Uh, uh, questions for Kevin on this?
I guess, how, how, do we know what the layout would be or anything, or would that come in with site plan?
It would come in with the site plan. We actually.
Cause it's close to the intersection.
Yeah, we did receive, uh, a site plan for January planning commission pending the zoning being approved.
For it to be what?
It was, a site plan was submitted for a development of this property pending the zoning being approved. Um, it was submitted to us. We just looked at it for the first time this morning, so we're, we're still under review.
What was it?
It was a, we'll drive through coffee shop.
Okay. Yeah, so that, yeah, the PCD was a Jiffy Lube or something like that, quick change, competition to HG, he didn't like it.
That's not true.
Hey, you're retired now, I'm gonna get something.
Easy, next you.
Sometimes you just gotta ram back.
But, and again, we're, we're, we like, we saw that for the first time this morning. We had a lot of discussion about, the, the access they're proposing would be to Isabella, not the other street, but we're, we're working through that review.
In my personal opinion, is a coffee shop would be an improvement, so.
It'll mess up a lot of, uh, campaign sign locations.
That's gonna be a caveat.
Okay.
Questions or comments?
Put it in the motion.
Then, do we have a motion?
I'm gonna move it through.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That's the bail. That's the bail to go home. Item six is consideration of an ordinance relative to the amendment of the existing PRD for Tax Map Fifty-Four, Parcells Forty-One Point Zero Zero and Forty-Four Point Zero Zero requested by Blakeney General Partners. The property requested to be amended contains thirty-eight point eight-nine acres and is located at eighty-six thirteen and eighty-six seventy-five Rocky Fork Amble Road. Kevin?
Yes, Mayor and Council, this is on Rocky Fork Amble Road. It's about a thousand feet north of the intersection with Morton Lane. Uh, land use plan would support medium density, single-family in this area. Uh, the surrounding zoning is a PRD, which is the Blakeney Courtyard, just two, three PRDs in town, NRM in Rutherford County. Uh, the existing approved PRD is for eighty single-family lots and thirty-three townhomes, so it's an overall density of two point nine-one houses per acre. This amendment, uh, was reduced that to fifty-nine single-family lots and thirty-two townhomes, so a density of two point three-four per acre. Uh, the existing PRD has a minimum house size of sixteen hundred and fifty square feet, um, that did, that did, was for, uh, everything. Uh, and then this, this requested amendment would be fifteen hundred square feet, but that would just be the condition that, you know, he is in cool space. That would not include the garage space, fifteen hundred. Uh, all houses would have two car garages, would be finished with brick and concrete siding. Uh, the proposed amendments include a playground and dog park area. Access would be from a new road connection to Rocky Fork Amble Road, as well as connecting, uh, to Kenman Pass, which is a street stood into this property from the Blakeney Development. The planning commission did review this request and recommend approval with a couple of conditions, uh, for them to, developer to add additional brick or stone on all housing options, especially important for houses with direct visibility from Rocky Fork Amble Road, and to show, uh, some, the proposed improvements to the common open space. They had a couple of areas they had shown us common open space, but no improvement shown, and we just asked them to show those improvements, uh, they're proposing in those two areas. Uh, I believe that's what I have.
Questions or comments?
I got a couple of questions. Who is Land Solutions the applicant?
Uh, they, they were the applicant. That's the company, um, that was the engineer on the project.
Okay.
Blakeney General Partners is the owner.
Okay. Um, then also, where we're abutting RM, are we requiring a twenty-foot buffer strip?
We did not. Uh, the only area that's zoned RM with housing is on that north side. Um, there, there was not a requirement of a buffer strip, whether there's, I don't know, eight or ten houses there on that north side.
Is there any interest in adding that? And then also, um, you know, I like that we're going the other way on density, you know, with the, uh, revision, but again, you know, we've got Rocky Fork Road, Rocky Fork Amble Road that we were loading to again. So, I'd like to have twenty-foot landscape buffer and, and is that, you said that road is connecting to the southerly cul-de-sac?
Yeah, that area they're showing us a cul-de-sac now, it would connect there, yes.
And who, who would do that work over on the existing property?
That, that's the same developer on both of those.
Okay, all right.
Both of those develop.
Yeah.
It's essentially an extension of Blakeney, right?
Um, somewhat, yeah. It's a very similar development.
Jerome, where were you saying, the buffer?
Twenty-foot buffer where the butts RM.
The top.
Basically, on, on that northern property line, because you got the, the area to the west, um, is, is the common area it's gonna be, and then the PRDs to the south.
I would assume with the stub running up there to the property line, the expectation is that property eventually develop, um, and would connect.
Yeah, and we required that, we wanna have that connection there in case it ever does, so you have the connectivity between neighborhoods.
So, the twenty-foot buffer, if there was one there, would end up being on this property, right?
Yes.
The next development or the current development?
Current, the one with, the current.
Yeah, property to the north is not within the town, but it's.
It's pretty much naturally buffered already.
It's, it's quite a bit of trees already there, um.
But, yeah, you're right. I mean, it looks like probably more than forty or fifty foot of trees right there. Kevin, do we know how tall this retaining wall? Did it show in there?
I don't know that we know exactly how tall it is. I know it's, uh, part of the reason for this put amendment is because of the topo changes again as you go to the west. Uh, the original plan had, there's a road, kind of, another road within Blakeney that was gonna be extended through there, um, and it, it wouldn't work from a, as far as the, the slope of the road and that sort of thing, couldn't meet our requirements, and so. Um, and it was just a very difficult area to develop, um, and so. They pushed, part of the reason to push this, the, the developed area further to the east is to try to minimize some of those retaining wall areas. I don't know that they know exactly how tall those are gonna be, either. know that they know exactly how tall those are gonna be yet or not, because I haven't been, I don't, we haven't seen the engineering plans yet. So developers here, he might answer, but.
The young man next to you could tell.
He might, yeah, he's, he's the developer on the project.
Counsel, good with that? Just for the record, and I forgot to do this Amber, I'm sorry before, if you'll state your name and address for the record.
Absolutely. Nathan Quinn, twenty-nine twenty-five Berry Hill Drive, representing Blakeney Partners. The retaining wall that you're speaking about, I want to make sure I answer everybody's questions. The retaining wall that we're speaking about, when we tried to climb that hill originally, we were, we were running into an exposed wall, exposed rock face wall of over sixty feet. And what, like I said in planning commission, you know, we didn't think it was wise to build up to something like that, and we thought it'd be a small market for the homeownering rock climber that might want that in their backyard.
Repeller.
That's right. So, as we came down this hill and we, we flattened out the site significantly, we have points on that wall that are slightly above fifteen feet, but the majority of the wall is under that, and it'll just be an exposed, exposed rock face wall that will back up to those townhomes and then those lots that run along that western boundary. So, does that answer everybody's questions?
In the elevation map, actually just below where it's listed there as retaining wall, it looks like there's creek or a ditch or something that goes down through there?
Mm-hmm. Yes, sir. That, that question came up there in planning commission as well. We've had a hydrological determination done for the site, and it was just found to be a wet weather conveyance, so just a natural drainage ditch. It wasn't an active stream.
But you got about seven different houses sitting on top of the drawings of that.
Of that drainage feature? I want to make sure I understand your question. Are you, are you asking about, I mean, we'll have to, we'll, we'll grade the site and we'll flatten that area out.
You can't fool with her nature. I mean, she's gonna run water through there one way or another.
Sure, yes, sir. I'm not, I'm not denying that.
Is that retention pond in the middle of the, uh, townhomes? Is that a dog park?
We have two detention ponds. Council member, one is on the northeast corner abutting Rocky Fork Amble, and the other would be behind the lots that about the cemetery, and it would actually expand, it'd be an expansion of the existing detention pond on Blakeney.
So you're curious how the water gets to that area?
Right.
Guess so.
Other questions or comments?
So was that a question to me? Did you mean that to be a question, how the water gets to the?
Oh, no, not necessarily, no. I think that they'll use a bulldozer to get it there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel.
Anything, any other comments or questions on this?
I had a question about that. The issue came up again about the open space during the planning commission question, and my understanding is you can't use anything to the west? Is that, am I looking at that right? None of that can be used, but it was all used in the calculation for determining.
Yes, as far as the overall density, that was used, yes, but it's, it's pretty steeped up. I mean, I think there's maybe some opportunity for walking trails in that area. That'd be about it. It's so steep, you really couldn't.
That's, that's a prime instance of what we was talking about gross versus net.
Right.
Gross being used to calculate the density, and really if you used net, it would throw that density much higher than, than what they're utilizing, because that area's not usable.
Okay, other comments or questions? Then do I have a motion?
A motion that we approve.
A motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Jerome, you kind of had questions about the twenty-foot buffer. I hear what you're saying on those lots right there, but I think with the buffer that's currently there, and then if something did come in on that other side, we could look at it then.
That's the reason I didn't include it, was because all of that thirty, forty-foot, maybe more tree line that's on that side is on the other property. And so if the homeowner wants to clear it, then that's on them. If they don't, then the tree line would always stay there.
When you're saying the other property.
The, the property in the county.
The one you're talking about.
The property that's not in this development.
Correct.
But that shouldn't be on the obligation of the.
No, what I'm saying is they have it already. If they don't do anything, nothing changes.
Right.
So if, it would be, if they, if they want to clear it, then they can, but this is already there. So.
But it's not on this property.
No, it's not. That, that's, that's right.
No, but when, but when they purchase that, I mean, they kind of know what they're getting in that lot.
I'm missing something here.
Well, I think, I think to my point about, you know, there's a lot of acres of trees there. If they ever annex that and or ask for a zoning to add into a development, that buffer's there. It's already a natural buffer, and we'll keep it. We'll maintain that as part of that requirement.
What I'm saying is, is that, that if the homeowner of that property decides to clear trees, they can choose to leave twenty feet if they want, or not. It's their choice, and it's already there. So it wouldn't cost them anything to put it there. It's already there. It's a choice that they would make.
Yeah, but is there also trees on this side of, on the development that's being developed?
No.
There's not?
Probably currently are. I mean, currently there are.
Currently, there's trees there.
Yeah.
All this tree through there. When this develops, some of those obviously will come down for roads and homes.
You're saying these are.
Yeah, you're pushing the requirement to keep privacy on the property to the north and not this development.
They're the ones that want it.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll now move on to item B, which is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with T-DOT for intersection improvements at Lowry Street and Sam Ridley Parkway.
Yes, ma'am. So, I apologize for this getting on a little bit late. T-DOT's doing some intersection improvements. This is going to be at Lowry and Sam Ridley. They'll be putting up some red light or some traffic signals, doing something with the entrance and exit lanes off Sam Ridley, and we're gonna have to move the water line. So, we want to stay within the T-DOT agreement, and they needed us to go ahead and get this approved, so that's why this is here.
And I think when Dave sent out his email, he made it very clear that this is not something we like having to do, but because of the timeline, we had to do this. So, any questions of Mike or Dave on this? Seeing none, do I?
Sorry, one question. Is this money we can absorb in our current budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Jerome's got the approval, I'll second.
Okay.
I mean, the motion.
Okay, so motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item C is consideration of an appointment of one member to the Historic Zoning Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in twenty-twenty-seven. With the passing of Carolyn, she served as our Chair of the Historic Zoning Commission. We unfortunately have to replace that position, and it'll end in twenty-twenty-seven. It is an appointment made by the mayor and confirmed by council. We only had one individual that put in for it, and that was Nathan Hudson. I know Nathan currently serves on our Housing Authority too, but I will nominate Nathan for Historic Zoning. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item D is consideration of an appointment of a council member to serve as the council representative on the Planning Commission. Tim was our Planning Commission representative, and so we will need to fill that position. So, and this is a council nomination and majority vote. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for a council member to serve on the Planning Commission.
I'll nominate Steve Sullivan.
Okay, we have Steve Sullivan nominated. Anyone else? Okay, I will close the floor to nominations, and all in favor of Steve Sullivan serving on the, as our council representative, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Steve. Okay, next is consideration of an appointment of one citizen member to the Planning Commission to serve an unexpired term ending in twenty-twenty-five, and this is Miranda resigned her seat on the commission. It was effective immediately. This is a mayor-appointed position, and we had three individuals put in for this. Nathan Hudson, Ken Hill, and Tim Morrell, and I will appoint Tim Morrell as the citizen member to the Planning Commission, and that is an unexpired term ending in twenty-twenty-five, so it'll only go through March of twenty-twenty-five.
Mayor, along those same lines, I currently serve as the chairman on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Being on planning and Board of Zoning Appeals is probably not appropriate anyway. We have a meeting next week, so I would like to resign that position, but I would like to stay on through December, so effective January first or December thirty-first, resign that position. And I would also like to make a motion that we appoint Jerome Dempsey as the council representative for that.
Do I have any say in that, ma'am?
Sure you do.
You're gonna find out you never.
So, first of all, Jeff, are we okay with, with that process in regards to him resigning? And as effective as Jan, of January? And I don't think there's a council representative on there. It would be a citizen, wouldn't it?
Yeah, there's, there's not a requirement.
Right, but it can be a council member as a citizen person.
But yes, you can, this body could determine if you want to put something on. Wouldn't be a thing to prohibit that.
Okay, and Steve, do you know when your term ends?
I don't, but.
Sorry, Amber.
I don't think it was March, so.
So you don't think it's this year?
No, I don't think it's this year.
You're digging right now as you speak.
Honestly, I've been, I've been on there about fifteen years, so I don't really know when it ends.
You don't even know where it would have began.
I don't know where it would have began. It was.
So he's made a motion, but how, how do you, if there's, if there's something that's coming.
Well, here.
There, there is one item on the agenda for next month.
But I mean, he's asking, is it monthly? It's only monthly if there's something to come before.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. Usually it's about ten out of twelve months. There's usually a couple of months in the year we don't meet.
I don't mind serving, but my issue is, you know, I want to be drinking from a fire hose here, you know, and I don't want that to impede what I'm doing here. I don't mind taking it.
So we all end up, we all end up having to serve on at least one board.
Yes, every.
What board never meets, you know? I'm sure someone, HG is probably on that.
No, HG's on. HG's on parts, correct. So, and it's what, two hour, two and a half hour meeting?
Ask Jerry about Sister City.
I'll, I'll, I'll serve, but if it comes to the point where it's too much, then, you know, I don't want it affecting this, but Steve's saying it doesn't affect it.
We wouldn't have voted for you if we didn't think that you could.
I can handle it, big boy.
I, I'll be honest, it's probably the quickest.
Get some water wings.
It's probably the quickest board that we have. We usually are done in fifteen to thirty minutes, so.
It's one of those boards where you do a lot of no's.
Yeah. I've been on that board, I think, in the past, yeah.
Amber, did you know when I, when my term's up? Is that what you were gonna say?
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Twenty-twenty-seven.
Well, and, and I think it's very fair that if Jerome is on it a couple of months and comes back and says, this is too much for me, but I also agree with what Raquel says in that.
Every one's on.
Everybody's on a minimum of one. Yeah, yeah, that's exactly right.
Y'all saying this is what I signed up for.
You asked for it, big boy.
Okay, so Steve has resigned effective January one, and Steve's put a motion on the floor for Jerome to serve his term that will end in twenty-twenty-seven.
I second it.
So Mark quickly seconded that, so he didn't end up being appointed to it. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Yeah, only other thing I'll add is I, I was the chairman, so my assumption is that the board would need, now need to elect another chairman, and.
In January.
Maybe that Jerome's. You don't take your vice chair when you text over? Shouldn't be Jerome.
Yeah, so y'all can look at that.
Yeah, that's Jay Michelson.
Yeah, up to the board. Okay, so we have a motion and a second on the floor for Jerome to serve, finish out that term. Any discussion on that? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Jerome.
Thank you.
Item ten under other. Dave, anything under other tonight?
I do. I do have a couple of slides, but before I get into those, I just want to say that even prior to night, it, it was a pleasure working with Councilman Dempsey, onboarding him for the first time myself, and I got to give a lot of credit to Mr. Spearman for putting together a council orientation packet. And so, the town had not done that before. I had not done that before, so it was, I think it was a great exercise for all of us. Appreciate Mr. Peach's help on that and, and everyone else who else contributed, but it was really a good, a good exercise for us, and so we are, we kind of used.
Guinea pig.
The Guinea pig. So we're gonna make some tweaks to that document, and then I want to get it in the hands of all of you, so you have it. And if there is a consensus that you would like to do something like that, an overview, I'm happy to do it, but I want to get that document in front of you first, so you can look it over and see what we've got in there, so.
Well, I'd, I'd like to say thank you and everybody involved with it, because even though I feel like I'm somewhat dialed in, there was a lot of information I was not aware of, and, and they developed a handy, handy handbook to go to, and, and they spent, we spent from nine to five with that, and so thank, thank you and everybody involved.
I, I was gonna say the same thing. I greatly applaud Joe's efforts. When Raquel and I came on in sixteen, that didn't exist, and probably until about eighteen, we were still trying to figure it out. So, I, I appreciate you guys doing that, because I think that was definitely missing and needed.
Yeah, and if, if we get in your hands and you think there's things that we have missed, because I've not been in your shoes, you know, and you think that there, we could add to it, just, just let me know. We're happy to, to adjust. It's a working document, you know, so.
Well, and I think for so many, I think you kind of forget what it's like to be in Jerome's spot, you know, and be drinking from that fire hose, trying to take it all in. So Jerome, I think you'll also be a good one as the months progress to go back and revisit that document to see if there's something else that, oh, that sort of been something really helpful for me, so. Okay.
Like the requirement to serve on a board.
I didn't put that in there.
Surprise. Rex, where's Rex? Oh, there you are. You moved. I was gonna say, I thought you were back there.
You on your toes.
Yeah.
State shared tax, we received seven hundred and fifty-eight thousand and seventy-four dollars. From actual twenty-twenty-three to actual twenty-twenty-four, we were up three point four nine percent. Local sales tax, we received one million, seven hundred and nine thousand, three hundred and forty-eight dollars. From actual twenty-twenty-three to actual twenty-twenty-four, we're up four point one four percent. We're lagging a little bit on the budget side, but maybe we'll have a good Christmas and catch up.
HG?
Shop local.
More important than ever. When you're doing your shopping, stay in the town limits and do.
Yeah, we, we've got a great appliance store down there on Lowry.
He doesn't give commissions either.
You, you were in there.
I've sold about thirty Speed Queens from him, and the next one, I'm hoping I'll get a discount.
Speed Queens lasts forever.
That's the problem. I might not ever get one. That's a problem. I might not ever get one.
Are we getting discounts somewhere else?
The good thing is, even though Rex, you said we're kind of down a little bit, it's like less than two percent. It's one point something percent, one point five, one point six percent, so it's really close.
Okay, other questions for Rex? Okay, we'll move on to item twelve. Directors, department heads, anything that you need to announce tonight? Mister announcement.
Something to do with the valves. There's gotta be something to do with the valves.
No, we're not talking about that.
So I'll have to announce an emergency purchase for the audit requirement. This requires no vote. It's informational only. We had to purchase a sixteen inch inserta valve from GNC Supply, and the cost was $32,500.
Okay, questions for Mike on that, even though it's just a.
I know what inserta valve is. Thank you. Keep service going.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Any other directors? Amber Lou?
Yes, ma'am. I just have my soapbox slide tonight, so we're still conducting the special census. As of this afternoon, we were plugging away worms all day. We are up to 10,200 homes plus that we have verified at this time, and over 31,000 residents. So I think it was 31.3 last time that I looked. So we have officially rolled into the thirties, which is good news. But we still have a ways to go, so I know that the planning department has been meeting with firefighters this week to kind of give them the rundown of how the backend works when they get out and start going door to door. But we're still trying to log as many as we can to keep them from having to go to so many homes. So if you see that yellow piece of paper laying around your house that you've now gotten twice, if you would just please fill that out and pop it back in the mail to us, we would greatly appreciate it, and I'm sure our firefighters would too. And just to give you a few facts, you must count everyone in your home, including newborns. We are only asking for the first and last name, along with the number of residents that live in each home. So it's not quite as extensive as a federal census is. And that helps to keep our property taxes low. We get $175 per person that we're able to count. Our last population was 53,070, and we're really looking to get over that just to make sure that we are capturing all of the shared tax revenue that we're due from the state. So that's it. If you see that yellow piece of paper laying around, I know that Christmas is coming up, and that would be a nice Christmas gift for all of us here at the town, if you would go ahead and turn that in.
Amber, did you say where we are at this point in the process?
Well, we've, we've done two mailers at this point. We have declared our census, Kevin, yes. We've declared our intent to conduct the census, so this will go through the end of February. We have to wrap up by the end of February and then send that to GNRC to audit those numbers, so.
And we're around 40,000 right now, counted?
Thirty, thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Yes.
We think we're gonna get, what, about twenty, between 21 and 22,000 households is what we're kind of thinking?
I think we have like 24, but some of that are addresses that haven't been developed yet, so I'm thinking it's more like 20. Kevin, is that a fair number?
Yeah.
Yes, so we will do a third mailing probably around the first of the year. And then after that, the firefighters will deploy and they'll start going door to door.
Yeah, so the, the point I was trying to make is we're just a little over halfway, and we've got about eight weeks, nine weeks to finish it. So I really need the public's help to keep our firefighters from having to do more door knocking than absolutely necessary.
Sure.
So.
Well, I think we as council need to, on our social media, really try to push it and encourage people to be doing it. I think we're speaking, tomorrow, we're gonna be at the senior citizens event. I think we need to make sure we're reiterating it there. We're gonna be at Rotary on Thursday talking. We need to talk about it there, so. And we need citizens to be talking to your neighbors as well. I mean, you're talking $175 a person. What's that gonna do that's gonna keep our property taxes low? Because we're getting money from this source. So it's vital that we do this.
And Mayor, we also have mailboxes out and around town as well. We've got one here in the lobby at Town Hall. We've got one at the public library. We're taking one over to the health department tomorrow, so traffic that goes in there. Scott Merritt was gracious enough to tell us that we could come put one over at the golf course for all of you golfers that go through there. We're also trying to capture some of that foot traffic at different places.
Yeah, I've, I've been involved with a few census with Spring Hill, and it's a, it's overwhelming task. And to try to get people to come in, and, because a lot of times, people, you know, they think the government, and this, this has nothing to do with, it has something to do with government, but that's it. We just need a head count. That's, that's all we need, just to make sure we get our state share of the money.
Sure.
Yeah.
We're just taking attendance.
Yes, that's it.
Okay, Dave?
Yes, I have a couple of slides this evening. The first one is, I attended the Sage Dental grand opening here in town. Sage Dental is, is a growing dental office. They started in South Florida. I didn't bring them up here. But that's where they started, and they, they're now in Georgia. They got several places in Tennessee now, so go check them out. They do all sorts of dental work from regular cleanings to orthodontics and all sorts, everything in between. Also, just a reminder that our, our ice rink is now open. Looks great out there. Mike, great job to your staff. We are closed on Mondays. Let's see if I can get the hours here. So we're open now till December 22nd, open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And during the winter school break, we'll be open Tuesday through Saturday, from 12 to 8:00, and also Sunday, 1 to 6:00. We will be closed for, the next slide, if you will. On our holiday break, we will be closed, I believe, at the ice rink, but so will the rest of the town. We'll be off on the 24th and the 25th in observance of Christmas. We'll also be closed on New Year's Day, which is the following week, resuming normal business hours on January 2nd. And with that, I believe this is our last meeting of the year, so I just want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holiday.
Great. Jeff, for you?
Merry Christmas.
Jerome?
Well, first of all, thank everyone and look forward to working with you, and I think we had some really good discussion tonight. The Christmas parade for all the town employees that was involved with that, that was my first parade, has not quite an official council person, but almost, and, and it was, to see the kids smile, you know, that's just, that makes everything, it was really heartfelt, and I just want to appreciate it. And Rick Hall with Rotary actually initiated our first entry. He pulled the fish fryer down the Lowry, and I was afraid he's gonna start throwing fried fish out to everybody.
Leftover?
Yeah, yeah, leftovers. So really appreciate that, and that's all I have.
Great. Raquel?
All right. Also, Christmas parade, everyone did a great job. It was a really fun event. Also, I want to say that the Christmas town luncheon that we had last week was a really good event, and I think all of the employees enjoyed it, and I think adding the ugly sweater contest was a big hit. So, and I'm sure next year you'll have a lot more entrants, for sure. So I'm glad that we were able to get together and fellowship with one another. It was, I think it was a good time had by all.
Just curious, if council wears an ugly sweater, do we get to eat first?
No. I also want to tell you about something that we have going on at my law office. And I usually do this every year and bring you all invitations to it, but this year, we decided we're doing, we're gonna be a collection site. But we are collecting toys and donations for CASA Rutherford County. And CASA is the court-appointed special advocates that are assigned to children that are in foster care. And so we collect toys and donations in order to provide Christmas to all the kids that are in foster care in Rutherford County. And at this point, there's probably more than 300 of them at last count. So normally, we do a Christmas, we call it a Christmas party and collect the toys. This year, we're just going to be collecting, and we're not gonna be able to do the party since we, it kind of came a little bit quicker this year than, than what we had originally scheduled for. We were gonna do it on the 5th of December, so we was kind of behind. But the election kind of got in the way a little bit, and so we are still being a collection site if anyone has toys that they would like to bring to donate to the kids in foster care. And last thing, I would like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and that you have a safe and happy time fellowshipping with your friends and family.
Great. Chief?
All right. Well, looky there, there's the Christmas lighting ceremony. What was that up for? How about that?
I guess that was for you.
Was it? No, somebody got a hand. Anyway, anyway, we've multiple types, and I talked about shopping local and the importance of it and, and how it helps keeps our taxes low. And also had a great time at the parade and the luncheon. I think that the staff is just terrific year after year. They've all got it down to a, to a, you know, a well-oiled machine for those two events. Love where you live, keep your litter in your car, properly dispose of it. Now, here's a big one for y'all. Everybody's gonna be opening up a lot of presents on, on Christmas morning, and they load all that trash up and carry it over to the, to the convenience center. And I swear, there's always, or somebody's tossed it in the back of their pickup truck or whatever, and it's just all over town. So keep, keep your trash to yourself until you're ready to put it into the bin. And be kind in doing it also. I wish everybody a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
Jerry?
All right, Jerome, welcome.
Thanks, sir.
Good to have you, and I look forward to serving with you.
Thank you.
Anything I can do to help, which I'm sure there's not, but I'll be looking forward to you helping me more than anything.
Thank you.
But congratulations and welcome.
It's an honor.
Jerry has a key to all the bathrooms if you need one.
That's a big thing.
I do. I mentioned this one time before, and I'm gonna still mention it again. My daughter-in-law will be graduating Saturday from MTSU with her PhD. So congratulations, Shelby. We're really proud of you. And want to say, as far as the Christmas parade, that is always a highlight of the year for us and my family and my grandkids. They absolutely love it, but as Jerome said, just seeing that, those kids smile and, you know, asking for candy, and you give it to them, and just looking at that, how that, that smile comes on, it just, I don't know how it can't put you in the, in the Christmas spirit. So just everybody that did worked on that, thank you. It is always a highlight of the year. Since this is the last meeting of the year, I've got several birthdays I need to, to talk about. I guess the first one just happened here a couple of days ago. Ms. Appleton had a birthday, didn't you? Might have had two. There's, there's a story behind that, but anyway, happy birthday to you, and I hope it was a good one. As far as my family, my granddaughter Mackenzie has a birthday this Friday. My son Trenton has a birthday on the 27th of this month. And then my wife Patty has a birthday, which a lot of you will be celebrating because it's on January the 1st. So you guys go ahead and have a good time on Patty. So I think that's it, but I do want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Great. Steve?
Not much. Jerome, welcome. Looking forward to working with you. Glad you're here.
Sure.
Last week, December 5th, Pam and I celebrated 32 years of marriage. So many of you saw my Facebook post, and I don't normally do much of a Facebook post, but this year I did. I got a lot of feedback about that post, and all I can say is, if you didn't see it, go look for it. But anyway, 32 years and counting. I don't know how she's put up with me this long, but I'm.
None of us know either.
Very thankful that she has. Well, it just, it just proves that she's a saint.
Yes.
Patient woman.
Yeah, very patient woman. Y'all sit up with her. Also, my dad celebrated a birthday on December 6th, the next day. He was here tonight. I think that might be the first time I've ever gotten into a council chambers, even though he didn't stay for the meeting. He used to tell everybody he was 39 years old. I'm 53, so I've told him he's gotta raise that number. The math just doesn't work. So I'm not gonna say how old he is, but you can probably figure it out pretty close. But happy birthday to my dad. And then last, but certainly not least, the Christmas time, you, Jerome, you mentioned the parade. The parade is one of my favorite events that we do, and it's mostly because of the feedback we get from the people, and it's direct, immediate feedback. You don't always get that, and it's very, and it's very fun for us. We're throwing candy out, and we're, you know, may, maybe talking to kids or giving them candy canes. They're smiling. They think they're getting the gift, but the reality is they're giving us the gift. And it's, that's really what Christmas is about, is giving to others. And it's, it's very enjoyable, a very enjoyable event for me. So Merry Christmas to the town, Happy, Happy New Year, and let's bring in 25 with a bang by shopping local.
Todd Spearman wants to know, did you get Pam a gift for anniversary?
We did, sort of. She, she still has a home, and we got some.
So the answer's no.
No.
The answer's no.
No, I think she would say she got a gift.
Take lessons, weed hopper.
I think she would say she got a gift.
Okay.
Yeah, so Jerome, welcome. I've known you a long time and look forward to serving with you in this capacity.
Thank you.
Thanks for always being a friend, though.
Yes, yes, thank you.
You know, Tim has decided not to be here any longer. He chose not to run, but we just saw Tim reapply to give up his time unselfishly to come back to planning after doing this for seventeen years. It tells us how much Tim loves his community, so I don't, I don't know if Tim's watching or will watch or not, but Tim, thank you for continuing to want to dedicate your time to this community. This is not, this is not something we do that doesn't take a lot of time. It takes a lot of time for your families and personal life and so forth, so. But welcome, Jerome, and also congratulations to Raquel and to Steve, because they both ran campaigns much like Jerome did, and were very successful in that. So congratulations to both of you, and looking forward to working with all of you again, including Jerome. I found out that a friend of mine, Connie and I, my wife, both worked at Winn-Dixie many, many, many years ago. What are you laughing about?
It had to be many years ago.
Just fun. Just thinking about the fun terms at Winn-Dixie.
Because I worked there, Todd was there, right? And because I worked there, they closed. But I say that to all to say this. I worked with a young man then, and he's been a staple in this community for a long time. His family ran a disposable business. They ran a trash service, Jerry York Jr. I don't know if many of you knew Jerry York or Jerry York Senior. Jerry York fought a hard battle. Jerry York Jr. had lost his life last week. So condolences to the York family. They've been around Smyrna forever. But he worked with all of us at Winn-Dixie, and that's how I met Jerry, full of life, jovial, pleasant, polite, always wanted to help, so.
Glad you mentioned that. I had forgotten. I was a customer of York disposal for about 25 years.
And so y'all mentioned the parade already, so the employee luncheon that we do every year, to me, is my favorite event. And the reason it's my favorite event is because we finally get to come face to face with hundreds, hundreds of our employees. Many times, we can sit up here and thank them, and we do, and we appreciate everything that they do for the town. All the directors, all the staff, everybody does a wonderful job helping this town go around. But to the employees, I want to say to all of you tonight, thanks for the opportunity to let us be part of your employee luncheon and interact with you. If we didn't get around to all of you, I'm sorry. It's a big room, but I appreciate each and every one of you for the job you do and how you help this town run. That makes all of us up here feel good and look better. The excellence in government. That makes all of us up here feel good and look better. The Excellence in Governance Award that we won this past year is because of our employees and not us, so thank you to all of you for that. Um, lastly, I'll close with this. I think we would all agree, we're pretty blessed. We're living in a town that's prosperous. We're living in a town where, uh, you have services, you have a hospital, a college. I mean, we've got a lot going on here in town. We're very blessed to live where we live. I know growth happens, and growth gets complained about quite a bit, and we hear about it, but think about the opposite. In two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, there was nothing happening, and so have an attitude of gratitude when you're in that traffic right now, because people are shopping, they're keeping your taxes lower by doing that, and remember the reason for the season. Merry Christmas to all of you and Happy New Year.
Okay, um, Christmas tree lighting ceremony. Thank you to everyone who joined us for the lighting ceremony. The lights downtown look great. Um, special thank you to the Parks and Rec Department, Fire Department, Police Department, Building and Grounds, Smyrna Event Center, and all the volunteers who made that a really special event, and we hope that you all are enjoying the bright lights and enjoyed getting to see Santa and celebrating the magic of the holiday season. Most of us have talked about the parade, but thank you to everyone who participated in the fourteenth ninth annual Smarter Christmas Parade. We had a hundred and nine participants, more than we've ever had, and we were worried we wouldn't have enough because it was the same day as Murfreesboro, so you guys showed up and showed out. We appreciate it. And, um, many thanks to the participants, local businesses, Smyrna Police Department, Fire Department, Parks and Rec, Public Works, town employees, administration, Stewart's Creek High School, Multimedia Department for televising it, and everyone who helped make it safe. The parade winners will be awarded in January, and we hope that you all will join us for the fiftieth annual Smarter Christmas Parade that will be on Sunday, December seventh, twenty twenty-five. Um, I would, um, like to say to the employees, I am sorry I was not at the employee luncheon. Britt and I took a little vacation, and we traveled back on that day, but, um, from everything I heard, it was a huge success, and everybody had a great time.
Do you know how much food was raised?
I have not heard that, that yet, so hopefully we'll know that by January. Okay, um, anything else to come before council? There's nothing else. I want to wish everyone a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year, and we are adjourned.
Okay.
Hey Heather, Heather.